Waiting for the official one minute.
Here a while. For snacks.
All right, so let's call to order the September 20th, 2022 City of Riverbank Planning Commission Meeting today. We have a roll call, please.
Sure. Chair Steve Link.
I am here.
Vice Chair Nataso Bosso.
Here.
Commissioner John Dynan.
Here.
Commissioner John Stewart.
Here.
And Commissioner Benjamin Rubin. All present.
Excellent. At this time, any planning commission member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time.
Commissioner Bosso, I have a conflict of interest with item 3.2 on the agenda.
Get to be an observer. So at this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak only once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon, and for record-keeping purposes, state your name and city of residence and make your comments directly to the planning commission board. Where is our microphone? Oh, it's on this side.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Jamie Agers. I live at 7730 McHenry Avenue, Modesto. That's in the unincorporated area of Stanislaus County, but it's within the project area proposed Riverwalk development. I'd like to point out to you a couple of things this evening. One, the State Department of Conservation is the department responsible for the farmland mapping and monitoring program of the 1,500 acres that's proposed within the Riverwalk development. Ninety percent of it is within the mapping program. And the majority of that acreage is a designation that's considered prime. The definition of prime is this: It has the best combination of physical and chemical features able to sustain long-term ag production. This land has the soil quality, growing season, and moisture supply needed to produce sustainable high yields. Our concern is that homes should be placed on soils of lesser quality. In this project proposal, there are up to 3,300 homes, commercial businesses, and more. Our understanding from staff is that the draft environmental impact report will be out very soon. You will be the first body to consider that document, and we would encourage you to vote no. Thank you.
Vice Chair, Chair and Commissioners, hello. My name is Karen Conrato. I live at 524 Hoag Road. I'm here to let you know that I oppose the Riverwalk, the proposed Riverwalk housing development. I'll repeat, Jamie, that it's prime agricultural land. It's highly productive. It gives farmers a living. It gives the workers that work there a steady income. And it feeds California and our nation and the world. It's something bigger than just Riverbank, than just us. It's a, this proposed area will be adjacent to the Stanislaus River. So we're talking about repairing habitat and wildlife being affected. We're talking about a floodplain that can flood and destroy the homes and the people and the property within it. And not only that, with a floodplain, if you lose that floodplain and you have a major flood, that land will absorb a lot of that water. If that's paved over with homes, that water will go downstream and wipe out completely homes further downstream. It's a very serious matter to consider. There's infrastructure needs, water, sewage, traffic, roads. I'm very, work very concerned about the traffic that will pour onto both McHenry and Patterson. You know, you're talking 6,000, 10,000 vehicles on an already congested road, roads. There was one other thing that I wanted to bring up today. I just noticed in the paper, there was an article about proposed mitigated negative declaration for the Riverbank Regional Recycled Water Project. And I don't know enough about it to say very much tonight, but the little I know, I would oppose that, that proposal. So thank you again for listening to me. I hope you take very seriously. This is a major responsibility that you're giving your recommendation to the city council, and I hope that you really research before you make that decision. Thank you. And also, I think all of us have invited all of you to come out and view this land that will be destroyed, that will be paved over. The other thing I forgot to mention, excuse me, was the water recharge. Not only is it a flood control, but it's a major, high-quality water recharge for our entire area. And if that aquifer, for sure, it will be, there will be depletion going on when you take, you know, the proposed is a million, is a 2 million water tank. That's a lot of water to be pulled out of that area as well as, sorry, I'm, just my mind just went blank. The destruction, the possible destruction of the aquifer, which is very serious because once that aquifer collapses, it will not ever hold water again. So again, I implore you to vote no on this project. Thank you again for listening to us.
Good evening. My name is Dan Whitstone. I live at 7724 McHenry Avenue. I'm again opposed to the Riverwalk project. I'm just wondering why we're jumping way out, you know, several miles out of town and building this island of a project. It sounds like we're a couple of generations ahead of ourselves. Just because a landowner and a developer want to, you know, make a lot of money off of that doesn't mean that we just rubber stamp it. I don't think so. So again, please look at the area and, and what direction you want to grow and how fast we want to jump out somewhere like that. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Matt Veneman. I live at 125 Hoag Road, also commenting on Riverwalk. I am against it. A lot of reasons for that. Primarily, though, is traffic. I don't see how two major in-and-outs are going to work. McHenry's a mess. So we live on this quiet little road. My kids bike up and down our road, but they know you don't go near McHenry. McHenry is becoming expanded, which we all hope will help the flow of traffic, but throwing another 5,000 to 7,000 cars in the mix every morning, every evening, I just don't see how that's going to work well. And we already fight to get on our road. My only other comment would be, I don't know of anybody on our street who really wants to be part of any city. No offense, we moved out there to be in the country and not be butted up next to a subdivision. So thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Barney Agers. I missed the last planning commission meeting. I didn't want you to think I had dropped off the base of the earth or changed my opinion on the proposed Riverwalk project. For all the reasons these people have stated, and then I can think of 10 or 12 others that I won't bore you with, but basically, it's ag land. It's farmed very thoroughly and productively harvested. They just pull a huge amount of silage off of the area. It, as Matt stated and others, it, it just isn't the right place for such a project. And I urge you to look at that draft environmental report when it comes out and really do diligence and mine down into the minutia of it. Come on out and have a look at it, and I think you'll understand that it's can be prone flooding. It's a groundwater recharge area. If they do this project and pull millions of gallons of water out of the aquifer, something called subsidence can happen. Anyway, I urge you, take a hard look at it and vote no. Thank you.
All right, so we will now move forward on to the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar be acted upon by a single action of the planning commission board unless otherwise requested by an individual planning commission member or member of the public for special consideration. Otherwise, our recommendation of staff will be accepted and enacted upon by a motion of the planning commission board. Item 2.1 is posting of the agenda. The agenda for today's planning commission meeting was posted on the city community center bulletin board, city hall north and south bulletin boards, post office, city website, and emailed to the library on September 15th. So item 2.2 is approval of the agenda. This provides an opportunity for the planning commissioner staff to recommend that an item be placed on the agenda for discussion or adjust the proposed agenda to allow an item to be taken out of order. Something that we just on to 2.3 then. So the approval of the minutes of the June 21st and July 19th planning commission meetings have been read by the individual commissioners and stand approved as submitted.
Move for approval of items 2.1, 2.2, and 2.3.
This is Commissioner Dynan. I second that.
Okay, roll call vote. Chair Link.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bosso.
Yes.
Commissioner Dynan.
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart.
Yes.
And Commissioner Rubin. Okay. Passes 5-0.
All right, on to items under the header three, which is public hearings for items 3.1 and 3.2 that were published on September 7th, 2022 in the Riverbank News. Item 3.1 is the conditional use permit. El Jacinto, doing business as Rio Grande LLC. At 3203 Acheson Street, the applicant requests a CUP for on-sale beer, wine, and eating establishment to serve beer. Properties at 3203 Acheson. Project will have a significant effect on the environment, will not have a significant effect on the environment, is categorically exempt under Article 19, Section 15332, infill development. Do we have staff presentation of this or background?
Yes.
How's this? There we go. Okay, so this is a conditional use permit for El Jacalito Taqueria. Conditional use permit 03/2022. So El Jacalito Taqueria is located at 3203 Acheson Street. They're requesting an ABC license type 41 to serve beer and wine with their Mexican cuisine. Here's an aerial of the project location. The parking lot surrounding the building is in red. This is at Acheson and Third Street, just north of the Del Rio, no, a block over from the Del Rio Theater. Here is a floor plan that shows the layout of the tables and the bar in the center, as well as the kitchen and the restrooms. They do not have a patio outdoors. The ABC license will be limited to the interior of the restaurant. So according to the code, they are required to not only get a use permit, but they also must introduce evidence that will allow you to make the findings and allow them to have the alcohol permit. Basically, the circumstances of this case, they cannot be detrimental to the health, safety, and general welfare of the city. So the applicant has opened a restaurant, El Jacalito Taqueria, where an existing restaurant used to be Nifty's has closed. The owners are investing time and money into creating a positive dining experience for Riverbank residents and hopefully folks from out of town. The owner wishes to enhance his experience by adding the beer and wine to their menu and other restaurants in the area. Specifically, there are a couple in the downtown and on Acheson that have added beer and wine to their menus, and they wish to be able to compete with them as well. So we would like the planning commission to determine that the applicant has submitted sufficient evidence for them to consider that the project is categorically exempt under CEQA for infill development and to approve the conditional use permit pursuant to the findings and conditions that were contained in their, in their resolution. And the applicants for El Jacalito are here today and may add some information during the public comment period. I'd be happy to answer any questions, or if you prefer to move on to a public hearing first, I'd still be available for questions. Thank you.
Do we have any public comment at this time, or would the owners like to address the, the board? Probably comment is then closed, and then if that's all you have, Donna, we can hold that up for.
Yeah, I'm going to stop sharing, and I was going to check my email real quick to see if anybody has emailed in a comment. There is one online.
On Zoom.
On Zoom? Okay.
I can allow them to speak. You'll have to greet them because they can't hear.
Okay. Okay, the person on the phone, the number that ends in 3108, if you could unmute yourself, we'd be happy to hear your public comment. If you'd like public comment, please, oh, here we go. They unmuted. Go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. My name is Evelyn Helbert. I'm a downtown resident. I'm not speaking specifically to these ones in the Nifty's one. That's building for a long time. It's just part of our history, but as far as the environmental impacts, as long as you keep taking one rest, one bar, one restaurant at a time and say it's not an environmental impact, you're separating them. Together, it's a different story. You already have two of them that you've approved, one on Third and the Highway, one on Santa Fe, that's 140, what, 140? This one's 50, that's 190, and you've got red carpet. That'll be another 200. We almost 300 spaces that you're going to need, 300 vehicles coming down here, breakfast, lunch, dinner, whatever. That much traffic in our downtown with the noise and some of them being openly out, that does put an impact on us. And I think that needs to be taken into consideration. Well, you put this all there, if you keep adding to it, it does create an impact on our downtown neighborhood and on the residential part. Now, in this specific plan, on page 105, 106, it's, it's pretty specific about the parking and sharing of the parking, the, it allows for uses of personal business services, restaurant customers, theater goes, et cetera. On, in the downtown core, downtown general and mixed use. It doesn't mention the Boulevard one, but it specifically does not mention our downtown neighborhoods, so it needs to be clear that they don't use our downtown neighborhoods, residential neighborhoods, for their parking needs. Because we already have a lot of parking problem now down here. You've got employees, you've got other restaurants and businesses and stuff. They already are competing about a problem. And this is another 300, or going to be another 300 that you're going to add. The requirements on, in this specific plan state that the residential parking shall be for, shall be provided on-site and on-street. Non-residential parking requirements may be provided on-site, on, within 800 feet of the project or two city blocks. You go 800 feet or two city blocks, you're getting into residential neighborhood one way or the other. And it, this plan does not allow that. It needs to be clarified exactly where they're going to park and where they're not going to park to help us protect our downtown neighborhoods. The other question, the other thing I wanted to bring up is these fees. It's my understanding that the city is trying to meet in blue fees for people to use the parking spaces. So they're collecting the same fee for the same spaces over and over and over every time you bring another one in. I don't know how that works. But as a planning commission, you need to look at the whole thing and not just, I know you're looking at one business tonight because that's what I'm doing, but in reality, it's the whole thing because every time you approve another one, you add to the problem, and yet you keep saying there's no impact. The Riverbank is our historical area. It's our downtown historical area, and it's supposed to be preserved because of its history, the way it is. It's not supposed to be some downtown Modesto or anything like that, and it definitely is not desolate. So again, I think you need to take into consideration the whole picture before you keep adding more and more. Thank you.
Thank you, Evelyn.
So now, item 3.1. Oh, I will close the public hearing. And now. 3.1.
No questions?
Okay. Motion to approve or?
This is Commissioner Dynan, so moved.
Second.
Ben.
Okay, roll call. Chair Link.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bosso.
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart.
Yes.
Commissioner Dynan.
Yes.
And Commissioner Rubin. Passes 5-0.
All right, on to item 3.2, the architectural insight plan review for the Dutch Brothers Coffee at 2,300 Patterson Road. Project is the review of a 950-square-foot coffee shop with drive-through walk-up windows variants to allow an east facade to be used to calculate, calculate signage and to permit three parking spaces to encroach into a side setback. The proposed project will not have a significant effect on the environment, and it is categorically exempt under Article 19, Section 15332, infill development. Do we have any public comment? Staff goes first.
Right. I have a presentation that I'm opening up right now. Maybe? I'm losing it keeps. Not letting me. Sorry, I'm looking for the share button. It seems to have disappeared on me. Well. Thank you. Okay. Next slide, please. Sorry, Norma. So this is the architectural insight plan review of Dutch Brothers Coffee along with the variants. They submitted this application for a 950-square-foot building. We have dual drive-throughs. We have a walk-up window. There is outdoor patio. There is parking on-site for those who wish to use the walk-up window. There is enhanced landscaping. There is also a request for a variance for signage and parking relief, and I'll get into that in just a minute. Next slide, please. So this is the project location. This is the intersection of Oakdale and Patterson Road. The parcels you see to the left is the shopping center there where we have Dollar Tree and, and Jack in the Box and other businesses. Thank you. The one directly to the east of it there, to the right, the small one and the large one, those are all vacant right now. Next, please. Here's an aerial view of the existing site. Right now, there's a house and garage and some vehicles that have been abandoned, and the house actually to the right, to the east of it, it has been demolished, and so that's no longer there. Next slide, please. Here's the current street view of the property to be developed. So it's community commercial, and the zoning is general commercial, and those both allow for the coffee retail use. So we're not talking about whether or not they could have it there. What we're talking about tonight is what the structure will look like, what the property will look like, and possibly some relief you may be able to give to the project. So there are at least four. So there are at least four, there are more general plan policies that this project is consistent with. Traffic circulation that involves signage and having the flow of traffic through the site that makes it safe for pedestrians, bicyclists and automobiles alike. Policy design eight point three, high-quality buildings, we were something that's constructed to a higher quality that lasts a long time, it doesn't degrade in the sun. And they've shown that they do have materials such as and a good mix of materials too, such as horizontal siding and vertical siding and block walls. And so there is, are high-quality materials involved. Safe access, which is designed ten point one. The pedestrian access and bicycle access has been designed from the street from Patterson Road. They will be continuing a sidewalk down Patterson Road where there is no sidewalk currently. And there will be safe crossings for the pedestrians as well as the bicycles to get to the walk-up window, to get to the patio and to the bicycle parking area. And then policy design ten point seven also discusses pedestrian orientation and how the design of the building and the way the lights are added into the parking lot. They should all be at a pedestrian level and attractive, and so these policies have been met with this project, next please. Here is a site plan of the project on the far right, kind of lower right, what looks like palm trees there. That is the, there you go, that is the entrance to the site and it would be a shared entrance with the property next door. The reason why an easement was created for this area by the property owner is so that they could use the the center turn lane for both these, because right now there is a median that comes from Oakdale Road down Patterson Road to the front of this property, but this easement is behind that. They still have to get it approved by Caltrans, but the city engineer has approved of this entrance. So once you come into that entrance, you would take a right. Yeah, that striped area there is the pedestrian crosswalk. A little bit higher, there you go, higher Norma, there you go. And that leads into the parking lot, the parking lot goes around the seating area into those parking spaces, you see spaces on both sides of the parking lot. The striped area at the upper left is, yes, that would be for trucks, for deliveries, for the fire department to park. So that area is set aside for that type of parking. Right below that, you see the dual lanes for the drive-through startup. There is a median in between those drive-through lanes that allows their workers to safely stand there and take orders for the people in line. Then they come back to one line and then they're at the, the exit off the property. Next, please. This is the floor plan of the site, as you can see, there is no indoor seating for pedestrians. That is outside and there's also a cover that is added, kind of a patio cover for the order window for them, for the sunshine, rain, the elements. Next, please. Discussing some of the architectural features, you can see they have a higher element on the right side and a lower element, which is an equipment room on the left side, and that gives some visual interest to the site. Like I mentioned before, there is a mixture of horizontal siding as well as vertical siding, there's some block walls, there's different paint palettes to make this building interesting for folks. Next, please. Here's the, the color and materials palettes, you can see they're mostly grays, whites and blues. So policy design two point three, which applies to the architectural insight plan review findings. The city will require appropriate signage and traffic control for the bicyclists, pedestrians and vehicles. Policy design eight point three, the city requires the use of durable, high-quality building materials. Next, please. Policy design ten one, the city requires site and building access for pedestrians by, and bicyclists by providing the most direct access from the sidewalks. I'd mentioned the crosswalks earlier and the extension of the sidewalks. Hopefully this will minimize any conflicts with automobiles onsite. Next, please. Policy design ten point seven, strong pedestrian orientation with the design of buildings, the streets, the sidewalks. We encourage the construction of continuous building facades with window treatments and minimal or no setback distance from the sidewalks. We do have a little bit of a setback and that's to allow for landscaping between the project and Patterson Road. But per our general plan policies, the parking and the dual lanes for ordering are both at the backside of the property and not as visual from Patterson Road. Next, please. The variance that they're requesting for the parking is that yellow area right there, this is the south part of the property. And you can see that the dotted area is the landscaping area. And so these parking spaces would intrude about five feet into that landscaping. On the opposite side of the fence, on the Dollar Tree side, they have parking within two feet of the setback for most of that property line. And here we're talking about, you know, a twenty-some foot area in length as opposed to the whole side of the property is over two hundred linear feet, so it is a small area that they're requesting for the variance. Next, please. Looks like I left out the, the slide that talks about the variance for the signage. So because this property is so very narrow and long, they can't turn the building, so the largest part of the facade faces Patterson Road. That's the facade that we need to take into consideration for calculating how much signage they're allowed to have. So they're requesting a variance that we can use the east side of the building instead of the north side of the building, which is a bit longer and would allow them to have use of the standard corporate signage that they use right now. Having that variance would not allow them any more square footage than they would have if the building were turned slightly. The square footage includes their logos, the windmills, as well as the sign themselves. So you'll see a lot more visual on the building as opposed to just Dutch Brothers words, which is on the building, of course. They will also have a monument sign out front to help people locate them because there is that large along the shopping center, between the shopping center and this project, there is a lot of landscaping, so they do need some signage closer to the to Patterson Road so people don't drive past and miss it. So variance findings, because of the special circumstances that apply to this property, which could include the size, the shape, which means, you know, it's very long and narrow, topography, location or other surroundings. So the strict application of the zoning ordinance would deprive the subject property of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity. So if you decided not to allow the parking variance, they would have less parking that they could provide to their customers. They could have more parking if the if the size of the, or the shape of the parcel were different, they would be able to have more parking like some of the surrounding businesses, but this really limits them to their parking. And then as far as the signage goes, the, if you didn't approve the variance, that would cut their amount of signage in half, they would only have about ninety-four square feet and they wouldn't be able to include all their normal corporate signage that they would like to have. Next, please. So the granting of the application is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of substantial property rights, and it's not a granted special privileges. As I mentioned, if the building were turned, they would have the same amount of signage that would be allowed to other properties that were wider. And as far as parking goes, they would be short three parking spaces. So if the building were turned, they could easily have those three parking spaces, but it would really limit the flow and the safety of the vehicles entering and exiting the property. So for safety reasons, it would be better for the building to stay with the short side facing Patterson Road and hopefully allowing the additional parking spaces. Next, please. The granting of the application will not, under the circumstances affects or adversely affect the health or safety of people residing or working in the neighborhood. And under the circumstances of the particular case, be, it won't be detrimental to the public welfare or interest or property or improvements in the neighborhood. Staff has analyzed the site plan and cannot think of any adverse health or safety reasons that the variance would cause if they were allowed. This project is exempt from additional SEQA analysis because of an infill development projects and infill development project, projects have five set requirements, and if you can meet all those requirements, you can use this exemption, and one of them is that the property is less than five acres inside, size which is true. And there's no waterways on there, there's no, it can be seen with certainty, there's no endangered birds or snakes. The property has been developed for a long time, there's been a lot of use by humans, and so a lot of those factors have been ruled out already. Next, please. So we recommend that you approve architectural site plan review and the variance based on the findings that staff has shared with you tonight. We do have the applicants here today, I would be happy to answer any questions and they are here for questions as well. Thank you.
I had a question, you showed us the lot next to it where a house had been already demolished there, is that the same ownership of those two properties, what, what was the relevance of that other lot you showed?
Yes, both of them have been in code enforcement due to transits hanging out around those places. And the property owners knew that they wanted to develop these properties and so started to clean them up to encourage those sales and also to stop code enforcement actions against the property owner.
But the, the owner owns both lots, the same owners?
Yes, and the very large lot around them too that extends over to the rear end shop.
It was because of the easement is why I was asking, like, wow, that is a large chunk of the front of that next door lot, but if it's their lot.
Yes, it is.
It's not infringing on anyone that, that, that would be against that.
Correct, and hopefully it will be used for the same purposes as this piece of property.
I think this is a definite improvement, and I'm glad to see this type of development on that stretch of Patterson. Maybe it means more good things to come. Did I understand you to say that Caltrans has got to bless this as far as ingress egress impact to the Patterson Road?
Yes, any project that fronts Highway one oh eight has to have Caltrans blessing on that. Sometimes it's, it's very simple and they just sign off on it. Other times, like in the case of Lucky House, when they came forward with their project, Caltrans wanted a lot of frontage improvements done that the applicant couldn't afford and didn't feel that they could move forward on their project if that were to happen. So we worked with Caltrans and they allowed Lucky House to defer those improvements until Caltrans actually has a project on one oh eight.
It looks to me like there'll be two e, lanes of egress, one from the parking spaces and then one from the drive-through. Is that the way you see it?
Correct, well, the parking lot itself has two-way traffic and the dual traffic lanes has one-way traffic.
Okay.
Not a lot of trouble, can, can you bring up that picture of the, the, that it shows the variance into the landscaping area?
Can you pull that up, Norma, it'd be with the yellow on it. I think it was more toward the front, oh, there it is.
Yes, okay.
There it is.
Okay, so it's a narrow strip of landscaping and then we're going to give five feet of that for parking and then the landscape area widens, am I, am I reading that correctly?
Yes, the landscape's wider on both sides of those three spaces.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Open up for public comments, including the developer. Or open at this time?
Please share your name and.
I'm Betty Bridge.
Residence.
I live in Riverbanging, twenty-two, forty-three Colony Manor, I live right behind the dollar store. And I when I go to bed at night, I can see the Galaxy Theater. So with Dutch Brothers coming in, I probably won't be able to see that anymore, so my question is, I have two. When any type of business comes in, and right now Dutch Brothers is coming in, are they going to open up the back of the shopping center? Where I live, I, is a turnaround truck turnaround behind the dollar store. And I'm, I'm impacted by the four dumpsters that are back there and people coming through dumping and the recyclers during the night. So I'm wondering, is that going to continue, are they going to open up the back of that for more trucks to go down? More people to go down with their vehicles, so I'm concerned about the backside and where the wall is. The house next to me is the end of the wall and then it goes down to regular fencing. So would a wall be put up back there as well?
Right, the, the property manager for the commercial Riverbank Station, yeah, for Riverbank Station has not, has chosen not to open up the fence between these two properties.
Okay, thank you.
Hi. Hi, my name is Brianna Uli, I'm from Barkhausen and I'm representing Dutch Bros and I don't have anything to add, I just wanted to introduce our team here today in case you had any questions for us. But I'm working with the engineer with Dutch Bros and we have Josh Harland, who's also from Barkhausen on the line, and in person we have Luke Capen from Evergreen and Russ Orsi from Dutch Bros, so if you have any questions for us, we're happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We will then close the public hearing and open it up for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve item three point two, the architectural insight plan review for Dutch Brothers Coffee.
Question, do we have to have a separate vote for each item? There's two items.
Oh, the site plan and the variance, okay. So I make a motion for the architectural site plan for starters.
This is Commissioner Dine and I second it.
Okay, roll call, Chair Link.
Yes.
Vice Chair Vasso is abstaining. Commissioner Stewart.
Yes.
Commissioner Dineen.
Yes.
And Commissioner Rubin. Okay, that passes. Four oh with one abstain.
All right, and then the second half of that is to approve the variance for the three parking spots and the signage for Dutch Brothers. I too will make a motion on that one as well.
I will second it as well.
Okay, roll call, Chair Link.
Yes.
Once again, Vice Chair Vasso is abstained from this topic. And Commissioner Stewart.
Yes.
And Commissioner Dineen.
Yes.
And Commissioner Rubin. Passes four oh. Okay, passes four oh.
Right now, uh, item number four is uh open for any planning commission comments. I'm happy to see that we're getting some investment done on our our main road through town there with both Dutch Brothers and and with the restaurant that was formerly Nifty's and people taking pride in in our community and and spending some dollars in it to uh to give it a facelift. So that would be a a better first impression of our town as people pass through there. But though, both of those projects seem to be uh very positive, in my opinion. That's it for planning commission comments then. Donna, do
No, wait, I have a comment.
I'm sorry, Joe.
Yeah, I'm I'm getting very concerned about the very large number of houses that I see with their own little horror story in the front yard with high dead grass filled with with insects and rodents. And I just, there has to be something that the city can do to stop this. I mean, it's like epidemic. You really can't drive by more than two or three houses without seeing another house. It's just left in complete disrepair. And I'm I'm really puzzled at what's causing this. It's like, people don't have any respect for their property anymore. So is there nothing that the city can do to encourage people to take better care of their, at least their front yards?
When the city receives a complaint on the specific property, we do follow up and start the abatement. Uh, at, let's see, we have a staff meeting every Monday morning and we kind of get an update from all the different departments. And while last year at this time, we had just a little bit over five hundred cases that the two officers were working on, we're over a thousand this year. So they're out there doing the work, but it's difficult to get people to comply. We have to follow up with letters and notices of action. And it is a slow process, unfortunately.
Sitting those numbers, it's not my imagination. The numbers are growing. Is, do we know why this is happening in our city?
I don't. I wish I did. We tried to put out, you know, information. In fact, the last water bill that had um a newsletter in it, we had an article on weeds and taking care of of your uh your property. But um doesn't seem to have helped.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Donna, did we have any county correspondence information?
I have no county correspondence at this time.
Okay, how about any staff uh comments of informational?
There is one. You may have noticed the chair sitting in front of you here. And it's one pill can kill. Uh, we have an epidemic of uh fentanyl um on our streets. Um, what people think are pills that they're getting from friends or from acquaintances. Um, many of them are counterfeit. They're not really um what the people are expecting. Some of them have fentanyl in it. Um, and so we have had, I believe it says four hundred and seventy-one deaths in the county last year due to overdoses and drug poisonings. And they range from, I think there's a picture on these handouts up here, and these handouts are are available for people to take with um information on it, both in English and in Spanish. But I believe um there's a sixteen-year-old girl on here. And then we had some, some people in their seventies who have also passed away from just one pill. So um talk to your kids, go online. The uh Stanislaus County Opioid Safety Coalition has a lot of good information. There are videos on there from families who have lost their children, who never thought that could happen to them. Um, it's a good time to go through your medicine cabinets and get rid of any drugs that um were left over from the dentist's office or the doctor's office, or maybe you stopped taking a prescription. Uh, in October, there will be a drop-off the drug event in Modesto, so kind of stay posted for those uh dates and times. As well as the county is distributing free bags of uh Detura. And I have a bunch in my office. And what Detura is, it's a package, and you tear the top off, and there are some compounds inside. And the smallest one holds up to ninety pills or so much liquid. I don't remember the ounces. But you put the pills in that bag, and you add warm water, and you close it, and you shake it, and you throw it in the trash. It's way better for the environment than uh flushing it down the toilet. In fact, that's probably what will happen to the drugs that um are with the uh the drop-off event. So please, you know, for the children's sake, clean out your cabinets. A lot of kids, get them from their grandparents' cabinets, their parents' cabinets, their neighbors' cabinets. Make sure that they're cleaned out and and we can maybe save a couple of lives. Thank you. But one more thing, you'll see these chairs. We have a hundred and uh hundred and seventy-six or hundred and seventy-four chairs all throughout the county um for this week. So um hopefully you'll see them other places that you you go to this week.
Thank you, Donna. And uh so at that, we will uh adjourn this uh evening's meeting.
Thank you.